I just stumbled something. Just let it might happen the same thing. Just type in your look up there.
Okay. Okay. Easy as that.
Ready? Let's open the starter order. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight to the City Council meeting, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. First, I'll stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Caitlin, did anybody sign up to speak tonight?
I have not received any votes.
Okay, has anybody signed up to speak that might want to that forgot to? All right, check that off the list. Number two is the mayor's report, and tonight I want to welcome the first ever girls' state track meet champions. Was a lot of them. I appreciate the red faces. That means we did our job.
It's a big deal, ladies. It's a big deal.
Congratulations. Yes, we're impressed. Talked with Coach Rachel, so I got a few stats I figured we might as well go through. So Kylie Leonard, will you stand up? Yes, red face. Not a girl. Kylie was first in state in three hundred meter hurdles, school record, fourth in the four hundred meter, personal record, and first in the four by four hundred relay, which is also a school record and a state meet record. Congratulations. Kylie is only a junior, so wow, huge ceiling. Jordan Lee, young lady, who's hand up. You looked like you weren't gonna do it. Jordan got eleventh in the two hundred meter, but set a personal record, fifth in the four hundred meter and personal record, and first in the four by four hundred, school record and state meet record as well. Brooke Mohman, right, did I say that right?
Mohman.
Mohman. Some silent letters on her, I can't read it. Brooke is a senior and ninth in the thirty hundred meter hurdles, personal record, and again, first in the four by four hundred relay, the state record and school record. Jenny, our freshman in the group. Not a girl. Third in the two hundred meters with a personal record and fourth in the four hundred meters with a school record of fifty-eight seconds? Fifty-eight point zero nine seconds? Is that correct? If I'm reading it right?
She got second in the four hundred.
At least what Coach wrote, so. Congratulations, Jenny. For the freshman, that's a lot of years of bucketing you got to do, so good for you. Victoria Gabrielle.
She's knocking.
Dang it. All right. She's our lone senior, right, Coach?
Second.
Second? Okay. Okay, sorry. Fifth in the long jump, school record seventeen feet, one inch, and second in the triple jump with thirty-five feet, eleven, thirty-five feet, eleven and a quarter inches, which is a school record. So you're not here, but I'm a clock forty. Some tech measures don't go thirty-five feet, so it's a big deal. And Mila Newman.
Why'd you say it wrong?
I say it the way the family says it. Eighth in the hundred meter, what was it, sixteen? I'm not even gonna pronounce it, but it was a school record. So congratulations, Mila. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna get a picture with you girls, and I'm gonna present something from the city. All of us up here at the council recognizing you guys and your first ever state title, and that we're so proud and I'm appreciative of the councils that came out as early as they could to hang up signs and stand out there and get hugs for you, because this is a big deal. You guys take it as a big deal. I'm proud of you, and Coach has got to be proud of you, and the city's proud of you. That's another state title in Crestwell, so thank you. Come down. Caitlin, you wanna do the picturing?
Yep, yep.
Girls, Coach, coaches, will you come up here, please? I usually get told what to do, so I'm waiting to see what's left to do. I'm not gonna read all this out loud, because I already did some of it, but this is a tribute from the city of Crestwell to you girls and the coaches. It is with great pride that the city of Crestwell congratulates the Class Three A State Girls Championship Track Team who made history by earning the first ever state title in over fifty years. All your stats are on here, so. On behalf of the City Council, staff, and citizens of Crestwell, and other congratulations to track team members who brought this championship to our city. Signed by me, the Mayor of Crestwell. Thank you. Do you have a number one? I tell you the number one. We're getting our own pictures? All right, girls, you don't have to say if you don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good job.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Congrats.
Congratulations.
Thanks, ladies. Thanks, coaches. Appreciate you. I've got a whole faceless in the crowd. Appreciate you guys. All right, I think we did have one correspondence, and everybody got any questions or comments on the correspondence term? I think one was sent to me and you. Anybody else? No? Okay, move on. Number four, the consent candle. Count over. All items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless pulled for correction. Has anybody had a chance to look at all the minutes? Has anybody gotten corrections, comments? Entertaining a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Counselor Kent?
I made a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Counselor Duke seconds it. All those in favor? All those opposed, same time, motion passes unanimously. All right, that'll bring us on to the administrative report. June Bills, Finance Director slash interim City Manager slash... Oh, I'm a good guy!
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of, first item up is the June Bills. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council on the June Bills.
Counselors, any questions, comments? Counselor Morris?
I don't have it in front of me, but I remember as I scrolled through it, seeing something from Crestwell Pharmacy. No big deal. Am I hallucinating? Where is it? Oh, Emerald Valley RX. Only two dollars.
Anybody else?
Some questions.
Counselor Craver?
All right, so one was the sheriff's office. I seen that they got paid. Did they get one lump sum, or do we?
That's for the first quarter of the fiscal year.
Okay.
There'll be four payments of that amount.
Okay. Then the next one was the four hundred dollar payment to Vincent?
That was to reimburse his travel expenses for the interviews.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the Bills? Counselor Holt?
There's a line item in here for Cascade Columbia Distribution. Can you remind me what they do for us?
Yeah, that's our water. Kind of a pretty supplier, Cliff?
That's our supplier for chemicals for the water treatment plant.
Is that monthly?
Yes, so we order monthly, but we don't need chemical monthly, so that will be like a quarterly type shipment.
Okay, thanks.
It's a supply and demand type thing.
It's very expensive. Thank you.
That's why we gotta get connected. Counselors, any other comments or questions? No? All right. Move on to the Land County Sheriff's Calls for Service Reports. Sergeant Speldridge, you're up, sir.
It's not raining outside, just so you know.
It is not. They make it vented vest.
I ran here. I was running late. So if you look at the calls for service for this month, you'll see that we're pretty much on par with the rest of this year. We're still a little lower than average in June. As it heats up, we should expect our calls for service to increase. A lot more people are out and about, and so there's a lot more stuff going on and a lot more people to call in said stuff. If you look at our actual calls for service, though, you'll see that there's quite a few property crime cases. There's a lot of fraud going on. And it's the fraud that you see posted online a lot, you know, the people calling in saying, hey, it's so-and-so with this, whether it's a police agency or a credit agency or whatever, and they convince people to give them their bank account info, and then they lose out on money. So that happened on several occasions this last month. We've been trying to put a stop to that, but those cases are very, very hard to chase down. We had a string of fires lit on Highway ninety-nine on one day, just outside of Crestwell. I'm not sure we were pretty sure it wasn't an attempted arson or anything, like what was circulated on social media, like somebody intentionally lighting them. From what we found out, kind of by the roadway evidence, it seems like maybe somebody had like a piece of chain hanging down from their truck, and it was dry enough that it was starting these little tiny spot fires. That's what we think. We never caught up to whoever it was, but we're very confident it was not a person lighting those fires. We had a rather publicized child neglect case you guys might have read about in the paper that they covered, where a Crestwell mother left her child outside in the very, very high heats. And so that is being prosecuted, and the child is being taken care of now. The Measure elevens, I'm trying to think how to describe this. The Measure elevens were they rose to the level of Measure eleven, but they were small children on small children, if that makes sense. So that's being followed up on. There's some issues that we need to work through with that, but just so you guys are aware, it was, I apologize, I'm sweating really bad. It's very hot outside.
It's not very cool in here, though.
So that's what those are about. I don't want to go into too much detail, because it is kids, but it was a kid-on-kid thing, so. Happy to answer any other questions. As you can see, we have wrote a ton of license and insurance violations. Usually they go hand-in-hand. Suspended driver usually doesn't have insurance. And so if you saw municipal court, some of you saw municipal court this last week, I would say about seventy-five percent of our docket was insurance, DWS, so. That's what I got.
Okay, counselors, any questions? Counselor Holt?
Back to the fraud thing. I remember seeing maybe a notice on Land County's Facebook page about that, like a notification about the fraud and how to avoid it. And I'm curious if the city of Crestwell has done any outreach just here locally to our constituents?
I don't think the city has. I know that we went around and we posted a bunch of signs. So a lot of these frauds are, hey, go down to your convenience store and buy Apple Pay cards or Bitcoin and send it to me. And so we went and handed out flyers to post up literally next to these ATMs saying, if it does, you know, if somebody's saying this, it's a fraud. And so I don't know if the city necessarily has, but we have done that as kind of on behalf of the city.
Is that maybe something that the city could do, maybe put something on the front page of our website for a little bit? I know you guys are challenged statways right now, but when you have time?
Sure, I can get some from Sergeant Speldridge and get it up on the website as a news story.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Coach Morse?
Just an FYI, Friday I got an email on my city e- from Nick, who I thought was Nick. Wanted me to do him a favor and, you know, buy some gift cards at Dollar General. He was busy, so would I just take a picture of them? Send them to this?
I've got it right here, too. I've got the email, too.
It's so sad, you know?
It happened last year or a year before with Mayor Strand as well. I got an email from him that was like, that sounds right.
Right.
I did forget to mention, probably because I'm sweating so bad, the Fourth of July in Crestwell went relatively well. As you guys know, the sheriff's office is working down one right now. And fortunately, it was pretty, it was busy, but it was pretty tame on the Fourth of July. The rodeo, from what I understand, went really well. And the fireworks, we only received like two or three calls about fireworks this year. And so that's a win. So I did forget to mention, kind of important, Deputy Brooks, as of this month, is no longer in Crestwell. So you're not gonna see him driving around. You'll see Deputy Fulton, who looks kind of like Brooks, but it's not Brooks. And Deputy Fulton brings a set of, you know, a new set of skills to Crestwell that we haven't had in a very long time. He is a SWAT operator, and he is a, he's a breach master breacher. He's in training this week to be, to get that certification, so he is the cool guy that gets to blow up doors and stuff, so. It's kind of a cool skill set to have here in Crestwell. Hopefully, we never have to use it, but it's cool to have that type of technical knowledge down here, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Garcia?
So for the new traffic tracking sheet, I just want to make sure that I'm looking at, understanding this correctly. So since you started this in April, is that fifteen speeding violations?
Oh, yes.
Got it. Great. And just to make sure I'm understanding, what is the traffic control device?
Stop signs or red lights, any type of traffic device that people aren't obeying, so. It falls under the same ORS, so it could be somebody running a stop sign or running a red light. Or turning down a one-way street even, just not obeying the traffic control device.
And the equipment?
Equipment can be anything on the vehicle. So whether that's, they have lights that aren't functioning, or I wrote the equipment citation. We don't write a lot of equipment citations. A lot of times we give warnings on those and tell people, hey, fix this problem. But it could be there's no license plates on a car, and somebody's driving around with no license plates. It's really anything having to do with the vehicle itself.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Counselors, anything else? I got one. How's the homeless population?
Fluctuating. A lot of our kind of long-term homeless people fortunately have found housing, so that's great. You'll notice we have a couple that are kind of always in this flux, but really, the majority of them have found their own long-term housing. We do have, I anticipate the number rising in the next month. We have a house that is going through the eviction process where there's a lot of people, I don't want to say squatting, but staying, and when that house goes through the formal eviction, where we will go in and remove people, I anticipate some of them becoming part of the homeless population. So don't be surprised if that goes up. Right now, I think we're sitting at about six, give or take on any given night. About six.
Are we still able to encourage them to move on and offer other services that might be available to them?
Yeah, so something we always do when we have somebody who is newly unhoused in our area is talk to them, find out what their connection to Crestwell is, and let them know where the resources are. If they want to stay here, we tell them what the rules are to stay here. And as long as they're abiding by those rules, that's fine. But a lot of times, people who end up here who aren't from Crestwell, they just don't know that there's not services here. Outside of the food pantry and then some of the church outreach programs, there's just not a lot for somebody who's struggling on the streets, so.
Well, I appreciate you giving, communicating with them that there, you know, there's rules if you are gonna be here, and that there is something that we can do to help, and we will, but abide by the rules or else. Thank you. Nothing else? Anybody else? All right, thank you, Sergeant.
Yep.
All right, next up on the administrative report is the city attorney report. Ross has been working on some code enforcement issues. Has worked with Shelley on the airport tie-down policy, which is in the agenda, are part of the packet tonight. Ross worked with Shelley on the North Taxway Project contract documents, also in the packet tonight. Armand has been working with me on the Centurion franchise agreement. And Armand's been working with Curtis on the temporary permit question and on annexation questions. And Ross has worked with Cliff and myself on the part rule signage. Jim, we're told fifteen hours of attorney time.
Any questions or comments, counselors? Next is the code enforcement with Chelsea, and I'd just like to say that Chelsea has given her two weeks' notice. I don't think she's done yet. Chelsea will no longer work for the city of Crestwell, and I think that's a big bummer. Chelsea, I think she's done a fantastic job. She's been very detail-oriented. She's, I think she's encouraged everyone to debate on vegetation. She's encouraged everyone where you can and cannot put your sign. She's helped keep Crestwell clean and organized. I think she's done a great job. And I'm sad to see her go. I wish her the best, but I am definitely disappointed that she's leaving. But other than that, I will give it to you, Chelsea.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I could agree more. Tomorrow's her last day, and we're gonna miss her a lot. She's a beam of sunshine in the office. She is really fun to work with, very organized. She's put together a great code program that she'll be able to hand off to somebody. In the meantime, Alex has agreed to take some code complaints while we look for that next code person. We also have to log those backflow testing receipts that come in for the testers. Barbara's gonna help with that in finance for the time being until we get a new code enforcement officer.
Counselors, any comments or questions about that or the report? Counselor Garcia?
So are the applications coming in already, or you haven't posted it yet?
We haven't posted it yet. Would like to wait for Vincent to come and kind of put together the profile and be part of that process.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sergeant Speldridge?
I just want to clarify. I'll be handling like complaints as they're received. I'm not gonna be proactively looking for some of the code violations she was looking for, but as they come in and are forwarded to me, I will handle it as what I can. Not vegetation or backflow, because I have no idea about.
I kind of assumed that, but I'm glad you cleared it up.
Stuff that I can take care of, I will take care of.
You have more important things to do?
Yes. Counselors, anything else? Code enforcement wise, Chelsea wise? All right. Move on to the building permit recap report. That Curtis or Jim?
Yeah, the building permit report is here both in a pie chart form, this new format that Angela put together, also in a table on the next page. What I'm most impressed with is the number of new single-family dwellings. As you know, we're in a moratorium, and we're, we still had ten single-family dwellings built, so kudos to the builders getting that done despite the moratorium. Also, we have the new commercial. It looks like McDonald's is pretty close to being done.
Counselors, any questions or comments on building permit recap report? Counselor Garcia?
Just one. What is being built over across from the splash pad?
Yeah.
I can answer that?
Sure. This is you. Please.
The Crestwell Church of Christ, they own that whole chunk of property, and they put in a sand volleyball pit for the community and for others, and I believe they're already using it.
That's pretty rad.
That's great. They're also putting in picnic tables, and I believe lights, and I'm not exactly sure of what else, but it's a work in progress.
That's great. I love that answer. Thank you.
That'd be great to get in touch with them so we can say thank you, because that's kind of a big deal. Offer to the city at no cost to citizens. That's kind of cool, so we'd like to recognize that. Anybody listen, please reach out to me or any counselor so we can recognize you for doing that. I guess we're out. All right, if that's no other questions or comments, we're gonna boogie on to council action items. And for any of you in the crowd, we did add a council item six D. If you've already received the agenda, it was late notice. Counselors, do you all have it? Wordens five seventeen, Caitlin?
It is updated on the site in the packet, so the electronic version's there, as well as the agenda is updated.
Okay. I want to make sure everybody has it, or we're not trying to hide anything. This is late notice, and we were trying to get it into the agenda, get it done tonight. Help Cruz out. So we'll go to six A, approval of that tie-down policy. That's our favorite airport manager, Shelley. Just a patient flight.
Counselors, Mayor, before you tonight is the tie-down policy as amended at the last work session between yourselves and the Airport Commission. The two pieces that we took out were the insurance portion for the tie-down. Everything else is exactly the same as you reviewed, so I'll answer any questions you may have.
Counselors? Seems like you did everything that we already talked about, so. All right, well, then I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Kent?
I move that the City Council approve the Crestwell Airport tie-down policy.
Do I have a second? Counselor Duke seconds it. Any further comment or discussion? One last question. All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same time, motion passes unanimously. Great job, Shelley. All right. Council action item six B is two thousand twenty-five Critical Warrant Airport Relief Program Airport Grant Acceptance.
So every year in October, we are allowed to apply for as many grants as we want in four different categories. Sorry, three different categories, priority one, two, and three. Three is resiliency. This year, talking with Jim and at that time, Michelle, we chose, and our engineer, we chose some resiliency grants to go after. I applied for four, and I received four. They did adjust the amount of financing. They did adjust a couple of them down. But before you tonight are the grants for your acceptance. They'll be we'll open the grants at different times during the year. The obstruction grant, we will not sign until after the master plan. Project that's just getting ready to kick off has had time to do a survey of the land and identify the obstructions. It's only on the south end. Everything else that was on the north end has been taken care of, but there are trees in Garden Lake Park. There are trees on private property, so they will be identifying those. And then we'll use that grant to go in and work with the property owners to cut them down and then replace vegetation for them. And that grant is twenty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars. So that one won't be till probably maybe next spring when we will start that one. The ELC equipment and the EWS equipment and gates, they both have gates. We already have one grant from two thousand twenty-four for a fully automated cantilever gate. So we'll utilize those three grants together so that we can share in the MOB and DEMO for all three of those grants. Those are the two grants that probably hurt us the most with them reducing the amount of money that we received, because the grounds, the gates are expensive, but we'll see how far we can get with that. But we'll see how far we can get with that. And then Taxiway Rehab, we construct environmental and design phase one. We'll probably start towards the end of probably February, March. Again, that's another one that's tied to the master plan. In the current master plan, there's always been the ability, the property to extend the runway 500 feet. It's a safety issue with the pilots and FAA. Unfortunately, you have to get it confirmed by the FAA that they will approve it. We couldn't do it during the runway project because it would have cost us $20,000 out of our pocket to do it. So we chose to do it during the master plan, and then it's incorporated. The fees are incorporated in that master plan. So we need to get a little bit further along in the master plan, get that part approved. Then we will start the design and the environmental for the Taxiway project. That's our next biggest one. We have discretionary funding from the FAA on hold in the tune of $3 million for that project. So we have to keep the timeline going because that's in '27. So we're kind of keeping our timeline going so that we can make sure that we utilize that $3 million, but we also get the approval of the extension. And I just like to make sure that you guys are abreast of the grants and what they're for.
We always have a good job getting grants, really have. Comments or questions?
And you may have seen in the Chronicle last week, I didn't know what was happening, but there was an article about the airport receiving $448,000. That is the original bill money. Now it's the IJA money. Bipartisan infrastructure law was what was first then under Biden. Now it's Trump. It's Investment Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act. So that is the money that we're utilizing as a match to the North Taxiway projects. And whatever is left, there's five years. This is just three years. We'll get two more years, and that's the seed money that we'll do to build the first rotation. Entertaining any questions?
All right. Got no questions. We still got time. So I'm entertaining a motion that is extremely long.
I'm going to read this as it's written to make Caitlin's life a little easier. I move that the city council authorize interim city manager James Piper to complete the necessary grant paperwork to accept the Core-2025-77S-0037 Taxiway Rehab Construct Environmental and Design Phase One, Core 2025-77S-00042, which is the critical airport support equipment slash AWOS component replacement and EOC security enhancements. The Core 2025-77S-00047, EOC essential equipment, Starlink drone and airport entrance security enhancements, and the Core 2025-77S-00051 obstruction removal.
Great job. Should we go to you, Caitlin? I'm entertaining. Counselor Gregory seconds a motion. All right, any other questions or comments for Shelley before we vote? All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same time, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Shelley.
Thanks for all of this, Shelley. Thank you.
You had awesome job.
Good job.
Counselor Holt, yes, excellent job. All right. Move on to item six C, Plan of Action for the City of Crestwell Audit for the fiscal year ended July 30th, 2024.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilors. The item for you is a plan of action plan that's required by the Order to Buy statutes. Whatever those audit findings. There were suit efficiencies found in the June 30, 2024 audits, and there is a plan of action already either implemented shortly after and are still in the process. And both of the action plans involved hiring a accounting technician to do another level of review before things get processed. And the first one was a control related to cash payable expenditures. There was a transaction that crossed over fiscal year end. Typically, those are caught in review. But in this case, it was one of those one-offs where the payable was paid, the check wasn't received by the vendor. The vendor calls in, we issued another check. In this case, we issued a manual check to hurry up and get them a payment in July, which crossed over the fiscal year end. Going forward, Barbara will be reviewing those types of transactions as well as reconciling the capital assets. In previous years, I've done all of that without anybody else to look at the work before it goes to the audit team. Typically, we don't want the audit team to find those things, but we're glad to correct them when we do find them and come up with an action plan. And that's what we've done. The second deficiency was related to the Build America by America. We had a vendor who produces a product in Southernland, Oregon, just south of here. Thought for sure that it was covered, except for there is a stipulation that has to be in the contract. The contract language has to be there as well. So going forward, we'll make sure that that contract language is in every contract, whether it's applicable or not. It'll just state, if applicable, Buy America Bill, Build America will be enforced. I did notice that when we use our engineer record to do these contracts, they're there by default. They have like a template that they use, and they do follow up on those. In this case, we actually used a vendor who was specialized in onsite service. I don't think he specializes in municipalities. And we kind of have an extra level of scrutiny in the municipality as we should. And I think we kind of got off track there by using a vendor who doesn't really do municipal transactions. But that being said, we still have to review those contracts and make sure they're there, and they will be reviewed. And going forward, this letter has to go to the Secretary of State's office after it's been signed by the mayor and the council president and the city manager. Auditors will follow up on this on the next audit and make sure those have been implemented. And in the case of the Build America by America contract, like I said, we had some water piping that was done over there. The contract had those provisions in it, showed it to the auditors. They were happy to see that.
Well, I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Morris?
I move that the city council adopt a plan of action for the city of Crestwell Audit of the fiscal year, which ended June 30, 2024.
Second. Counselor Kent seconds a motion. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Jim before we vote? Counselor Stevens?
Just a quick question, but this doesn't negate any of the work that he accomplished, right?
No, it didn't change their opinion, but they felt like they had to be reported because of some of their findings. And that's good. You want to see findings. You want to see things that are corrected going forward.
Thank you. Counsel Crimmer?
So just a quick question about your accounting. Did the balance sheet not balance that time?
The balance sheet balanced. So we just didn't, we didn't record either the payable or the expense in the June 30 fiscal year ended, or rather it was in.
It's in the transaction then?
Yeah, it was in the July month of the next fiscal year. And what happened is we just, we had to record it back, which is fine. Recorded it back into the prior fiscal year. And then it had, you know, rippling effect of adding that to the capital assets as well.
Wouldn't have found it any other way anyways if it wasn't actually put in, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same time, motion passes unanimously. Move on to our last council action item is six D. If you don't have it, we can get it for you. Chris?
Thank you. There we go. I apologize for the last second add-on. Sorry to catch you off guard with it. So in front of you, I have a development code change that's to comply with FEMA's requirements. And at this point, staff's recommending to delay adopting this ordinance. I recommend two options. One is to see this item again at the next council meeting or to have staff, maybe Jim and I, once we deem that it's appropriate, to bring it back to city council. There's just some noticing technicalities that I won't worry you with. So FEMA got sued in 2009 because the way that they were administering the floodplain controls was endangering some salmon and some other wild species. And so in response, they required that local jurisdictions would adopt development code changes for their floodplain. And so jurisdictions like Almond, we're given one of three options. One is to adopt the model code. One is to adopt this habitat assessment style code. And one is to basically disallow all development in our floodplain. And in November 24, city council, we chose to go the habitat assessment method. And so Planning Commission, they did their job there, viewed a development code change. And it's kind of a blend of the model code and the habitat assessment. It kind of allows the developer to kind of like pick which path they want to go. And so Planning Commission made the recommendation to approve the code with the understanding that we're kind of in this gray area of we don't know what's actually going to be enforced. And so what's kind of happening right now is FEMA was countersued because the way that they're implementing these requirements did not align with a couple of things. The one I'm most familiar with is the land use law. So when you're changing land use law like we are right now, there's procedure in place. You have to notice it to neighbors. You have to go through Planning Commission. You have to go through city council, and you have to evaluate kind of the pros and cons of everything. And a couple of housing agencies took that, and they filed an injunction hearing with FEMA. That was May 29th. I thought we'd have a little bit more information by now. The city attorney hasn't updated me with anything. But the risk of not adopting changes is that FEMA does have the power to revoke the Crestwell status as a NFIP community. And so it's National Flood Insurance Program Community. And so if we lose that, then it means that flood insurance rates go up. But our attorney has advised that our risk is quite low. There are other cities in Oregon that haven't done anything at all. And FEMA hasn't revoked any flood insurance status from those communities. And so this way, so right now, we have a recommendation through Planning Commission. Basically, all we have to do is hit the button, and we can adopt the changes. So I think we're operating in good faith. And so, yeah, my recommendation is to just delay, put this on pause. So the reason I felt like it was important to present tonight is because I sent out the notice to all the neighbors and said, hey, Planning Commission's meeting on June 26, and city council's meeting on July 14. And I just, we've had a busy time at city hall, and yeah, I'm last minute here tonight, but yeah.
Counselor?
Okay, could you please recap? We voted to do on a case-by-case basis, and then you took it back to the Planning Commission, and they didn't take our recommendation. They instead decided to combine it with the one we rejected. Is that correct?
Not really. It was more the floodplain manager came back with that recommendation. And it's been consistent with how a lot of other cities have made code changes. Yeah, I was a little surprised by that, too.
Well, it surprises me because we already had the discussion. We already made a decision.
Yeah.
And so to have something come back to us that overrides that decision, you know, I would like to see it in a work session again first so that we can discuss why those changes were made, why we were overridden, so we have a better understanding of that. Just would be my preference.
Okay. The floodplain manager, is that the one in Cottage Grove?
Yeah, Lenny, yeah. Yeah, I know Lenny worked with the city attorney, and Lenny's more well-connected with the floodplain ruling than I am. So I'm very happy we're working with him.
He's very knowledgeable with him, or he's gone a few times just personally checking on our own property, so. Counselors, any other questions or any comments to Counselor Holt of putting this off to a work session? Counselor Kent?
Just that I agree we're visiting it in a work session.
Okay. Counselor, anybody else? Okay. So I kind of agree as well that it might need to be a work session since we're just kind of, you know. I think we did, it does sound, and I'm not saying they did anything wrong, but it sounds like they blended. The way you presented it, it sounded like they did blend it after we kind of, all as a council, I think pretty unanimously, if I recall right, brought like more case-by-case habitat. So I'd like to see, can we override the flood manager? I mean, we are the city council. I feel like we're able to do whatever we want as a whole, so.
Absolutely, yeah. This is your city. This is your development code. I think there's, I don't know if I feel strongly about which option is better. I think having the model code and the case-by-case code is kind of the most flexible option. But I understand that it's, it does feel a little behind the back of we heard you, but we're going to do it this way instead. But yeah, I do think it is, I think we're moving in the best outcome.
Counselor?
And my intent to want to discuss this in a work session again is not because I think it's about a derelict. I really just don't know the answer to that. I'd just like to have a discussion of it, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's fair because I think just on this alone, you know, I said we get through it, but I was not able to look at every last detail. So I think there's a lot there that we need to unfold from what we already thought we had as a council had agreed upon. So anybody else have any comments?
I do one more.
Counselor Holt?
Is there some speculation that some of these things will go away if FEMA goes away?
I don't know.
I like to ask the hard questions, I know.
I mean, that's the million-dollar question. FEMA is losing a lot of funding right now.
Yeah.
We're grateful you will just right wait it out.
I mean, again, this is why I think a work session is a great place for this.
I know this is a normal, but Mrs. Yee's got a hand up, and I know she's got some additional information.
I would like to just have it on the record for maybe more transparency. But when you referred to him in Cottage Grove, it's now Lenny who replaced the gentleman that we all started when we did surveys. Our community did surveys to check our elevations again because they're different than they were in 1999 and earlier in 2008. And so the overlay maps aren't even accurate based on history. However, the gentleman that was helping us, that seemed to kind of advocate for us earlier on when Matty was here and other things, he's left, and now we have a new person, Lenny, that if then we kind of lost momentum or continuity or anything else, if they're now just making decisions for us and we don't really have control, that's not cool. And I think the community maybe needs to know about it.
Well, I think everybody next to the river or in that vicinity probably needs to be here for that one. So Jim, I may not hear a little bit, can we just not table this, but can we just move this to a simply, just move this to the next work session so we keep Cruz on track, but also get a discussion and get it out to the citizens?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
We don't have to vote on it, right?
We can just, okay. Counselor, do you agree with that? Everybody up here?
I just do have one.
Counselor Stevens?
One question. So if this had not been decided to move to another work session or postpone, and we voted this down, would that just, would that be the end of it? We would move forward with the way the floodplain is? Or would that kind of just put that back to the Planning Commission to rehash this?
That's why I think moving this to a later work session, later meeting makes sense that we don't have to go through the entire process.
Okay. All right.
If the results of the injunction hearing result in a total change of the development code with a longer timeline, then it might be appropriate to go back to Planning Commission anyway just so we can be a transparent government. But also, there's a timeline of implementing these things. And since we're kind of past Planning Commission, it makes us a little bit more efficient on the backend.
Well, if we do something next work session, we should be able to put it right back on the next council session. And go ahead, but also, is a month going to mess up any, is it going to affect the efficacy of the plan?
Um, that's, I just, I don't know, I don't know any direction from our city attorney, Um, that's, I just, I don't know, I don't have any direction from our city attorney, from the floodplain manager, so I'm not even sure that next work session, like, anything will be changed.
Oh, okay.
So that's kind of...
So you might have to even be ready for us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then also, Missy mentioned that the floodplain maps are changing. That's also a moving project with FEMA, that there's this additional enforcement on our floodplain code, and also our floodplain overlay zone is changing. So there's kind of two FEMA projects that are alongside each other. And FEMA has promised to come to Crestwell in September, so.
But they can afford the plane ticket.
They have.
Yeah, it hasn't been finalized, but they...
All right, Counselors, are we all okay with that? To move this to discussion item for the next work session, and then Curtis can take over from there. Let me just bring it back.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's it. We're not gonna vote on anything. We're gonna table, I don't know, actually, we need to hear, right? We're just gonna move that on to work session, postpone to work session. All right. So that's it for council action items. Next up will be upcoming events. Please review the city calendar. Everything is on the calendar. I believe Curtis, correct me if I'm wrong, August 11th is a public hearing for Nathan Montpuls property to be turned to residential instead of a rule. Okay. So if anybody heard me, that's August 11th, that's six. Do, Counselor, doesn't need to be here for that, correct? It's just a public hearing? For you, or is that a council?
That's a regular council.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we needed to put that out there sooner, or if we, the city wrote letters to the neighbors that hundred-foot?
So, I mean, I've sent out the neighbor notice for legalization, and we've had a couple of these now, and it seems appropriate to talk about it the next work session, just in case there's any major questions. But annexations are usually straightforward. Is the property an UGB? Is our urban services available? Is it contiguous to city limits?
Okay, so we're all, should we get to go then? Okay, perfect. All right. Well, that being said, then we return.